I guess that's our notation to start. It's our 6 o'clock bell, it's kind of like the school. Good evening, I'm glad you have chosen to participate in our city council meeting tonight. I'd like to call this to order for our regularly scheduled city council meeting Tuesday, June the 8th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. I would like to ask Barry Thibodeau, pastor or priest of Christ the Savior Orthodox Church, to come and announce an invocation, and then we will stand and do the pledges after he prays.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, Almighty, Eternal God, we thank you for our community and the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We humbly ask for the presence of your Holy Spirit at this meeting of our city council. We ask your blessings upon our elected officials, that you would grant them wisdom, understanding, insight, and sound judgment as they discharge the duties of their office. We ask that you would grant protection and grace to our civil servants and first responders as they provide services to our community. We also pray for the citizens of Jacksonville, that you would grant us grace to the responsible citizens, always willing to reach out in compassion to those in need. All this we ask of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior.
Amen. Thank you. If you'll join us in the pledge, first the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Do we have a special present take? Okay. Our first item is citizens' participation, and before we begin that, I'd like to kind of explain, make the assumption that a lot of you people are here because of Agenda item 12 tonight, it's on our agenda. Some of the council members have been approached as to the current status of the relief route and what our stance is on that relief route. My response was the way to truly determine that would be to just place the item on the agenda and vote it up or down, so that's what we have done tonight. Since we posted that on our agenda, we became aware of the TechStop video that was posted in April stating that based on the public comments, that they were not going to pursue this route at this time. To my knowledge, the city had not been notified of this video, so there was some chatter on Facebook on why in the world are we doing this? We're doing it because we were not aware of that video. So that's why we're going to talk about it tonight and put it on our agenda. I think we've got, how many? Seven?
Six.
Six? Six have signed up for the public comment. We're going to limit you to three minutes. If you'll keep your comments to three minutes, you can speak for or against, and these are in no certain order, they're just in the way that they were turned in. Our first is David Capps. If you'll come to the podium, state your name, we'll start the timer, and you can see your clock on either side of the wall. If you'll limit it to three minutes, we won't be here at midnight, so go ahead.
Many a bouts for me, I never talk in three minutes.
Good.
My name is David Capps. I appreciate the opportunity to get to stand before y'all. I live on the west side of Lake Jacksonville, and I'm here to speak in opposition to this, whatever this is. You know, we still don't get enough information to know is what exactly we're talking about? What are we talking against? I know y'all have heard all these reasons, but I just want to present them tonight. Number one, I enjoy driving through downtown Palestine and Athens now because there's no traffic, there's no businesses, no restaurants, nothing where people are pulling out in front of you, and so it's very easy now. I don't ever take their loop because I can go through faster through downtown because there's nothing in your way. The downtowns are dead. I moved here in 92, we love Jacksonville, and I don't want to see a dead Jacksonville downtown. I mean, we owe it to the people who've come in, spent the money, built businesses and all, especially when I'm told that the study shows that the truckers will save, what, six to seven minutes driving through town. Well, golly, I don't want to slow them down six or seven minutes. So I'm very much against spending millions of dollars on this, makes no sense. If they want to spend a bunch of money, then they need to make four lane, in my opinion, on Bolton between 175 and 69, make that four lane, bring everybody around instead of millions, we could pay a little bit of overtime, have policemen at the five lights, route traffic through there, get them on 69, they can head north. Now, I hear a lot of rumors, and it's just rumors, that that would still make all the rich elites and buller happy, who own all that land up there, that I understand they're looking forward to building a bypass so they can put in their hotels, their restaurants, and their gas stations north of Lookout Mountain, so when everybody comes around Jacksonville, they'll have a place to stop. I have friends who build homes in the routes, their retirement homes, look at the price of homes, there's no way the state's going to reimburse them for the price if they can get to their home now. And then they're supposed to go out and buy one by six by 16-foot boards at $39 each and build a new home. I just can't see that. And finally, evacuation route. I moved here in 92, which is 37 years ago, twice we've had increased traffic from hurricanes. And so to me, that just doesn't make sense. They're going to get hung up in Rust, they're going to get hung up in Alto, they're going to get through Jacksonville a lot faster than they will through those two cities. So for the people, you know, I was against selling the library, I was against Chick-fil-A, I haven't eaten there yet, mainly because I saw what it did to, it closed down last night, and I'm done. And I was wrong about Chick-fil-A, but thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Very good.
Can we put it on?
Number two that signed up, I think, is Keith Gumney. Is that correct? Great, if you'll...
All right, I'm going to do my best to avoid that bell.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. That'd be great, thank you. Go ahead.
First, thank you for your time. We, the people that essentially have elected you guys sitting in front of me, have already opposed a bypass by 75% based on financial, environmental, and other concerns. TechStop's already shelved the project, but once again, here we are. The city of Jacksonville has financially incentivized many businesses to entice them to Jacksonville, including but not limited to Chick-fil-A, the new 7-Eleven gas stop being built, McDonald's, the new Super One coming in, all of which are 69 and rely on the traffic to support them, the very traffic that would be diverted away with the bypass. If traffic is a concern, let's stop putting everything right on 69 and encourage growth outward from 69. As finish Loop 456, I encourage development along it. With all the new businesses opening up, including, once again, Chick-fil-A, Super One, Hotel Ritual, Bar Ritual, Main Street Plaza, the 7-Eleven stop coming in, the newly reopened library, I feel like the city's finally turned a corner and is becoming an interesting place to live and visit. Makes no sense to hamstring these businesses, which are mostly owned by the people in Jacksonville, and employ the people of our community by deliberately steering people away from our town. So if you're here to decide whether the city should support or oppose the bypass, the people you're elected to represent have already spoken, we overwhelmingly oppose it. TechStop, listen, now we hope you guys will. Thank you.
Thanks. Very good. And thanks for avoiding the bell.
I was nervous about it.
Number three is Mark Ford. There you go. State your name and where you, address, and we'll start you the timer.
I'm Mark Ford, I have Charlotte's Web Childcare Center, we live just outside the Loop here in Jacksonville. Whenever I get in front of a mic, my brain oozes out and self-prepared a statement to read.
That's fine.
To keep me on track, hopefully to keep me on time as well. Public officials typically take one of two approaches to deal with a problem. One, we have to do something, or two, we have to do the right thing. This Loop/bypass project is doing something, but when you weigh the negatives against the effects on our community against the positive results, I think it becomes obvious that this is not the right thing. First, what is proposed is not a loop, it is a bypass. Navigation systems will guide travelers around our town. They will not see our hotels, our shops, they will not smell our food, they will not see our nice little town. They will not stay here, they will not shop here, they will not eat here, they will not discover that it's a pretty nice place to live, and they will not move here. It's like diverting a river of money around us to be spent in Tyler and other towns downstream. This will result in a substantial reduction of revenue, property values, and tax streams to our community. Second, I do not believe that this bypass was designed to intentionally punish us, but the result will be the same as if it had been. As a bypass rather than a loop, there will be no access roads, no driveway access, this means that many properties will be locked away, inaccessible, and none of the properties between exits will ever be able to be developed. This means that no matter how much we regret a bad decision today, we will not be able to undo it on any remorseful tomorrow. I do not have time in three minutes to address the many solutions that could deal with our traffic issues in a mutual beneficial way, a mutually beneficial way, but they do exist. The one proposed is simply the quickest, easiest, and cheapest for the state, so any variations to this plan would be beneficial to us. We might not be able to stop the state if they have made up their mind to choke us with this plan, but we should not let them think that we like the road they have chosen for us.
Thank you, Mark. Number four is Regina Brown.
Greetings.
Greetings.
I think I may be the only one here that's not here about the highway.
You still only get three minutes. And that bell.
I'll be quick, I'll be quick, I promise. I do have a tendency to, you know, I'm a minister, so I have a tendency to talk, but I'll be quick. I just, I come in today, Regina Brown, citizen of Jacksonville, mayor, councilman, I come in because I've been talking to Chris Sylvie about zoning issue, a code. I went through the history of the codes in Jacksonville, and I can't tell you, I didn't understand much, but I do understand that there is a code against bringing manufactured homes into the city in that stance, and I have purchased a cabin, which is not a mobile home, it may be considered a manufactured home to the city, I'm not sure. I haven't heard, I haven't had a response back from Mr. Sylvie yet, but he did tell me that he thinks that's against the code. I wanted to make sure you guys knew that I purchased this cabin because it was affordable to me, a woman that works for the county and works, makes meager earnings, for, to plan for my 28-year-old son's future. I have a 28-year-old son who has severe mental illness, and we're trying to prepare him for when the day comes when I'm not here. We had a property in town that I inherited, and so the purpose in getting the cabin was for him to have a place to live when, once I'm gone, and I'm going to build in front of the cabin, a home for me, but this will be his living quarters on the property, and it's already been purchased and already, it's been there about a month now, but we have not started any work on it, waiting on the city's approval for a permit. So I come today asking for you to consider some kind of exception, some kind of clause, something that we can get started on this project so that my son can have a place that he can call home once I'm no longer here.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, yeah.
Gentlemen, I'm here for the same purpose the majority have been here. I concur 100% with what has been said. The only thing I'm going to add is, I go to church in Rust. When I come from Rust on Sunday, if I hit that light at the loom, I can drive all the way to El Paso Street without stopping, without failing. Sometimes, of course, I do hit the light and have to stop, but the rest of the way is straight shooting, and I have no trouble getting around. Yes, we have a lot of traffic. Yes, if you're trying to get on the street from one of the side streets without the light, it's bad. Somebody said something about Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A has messed up that El Paso Street access terribly. I will go out of the way to avoid it, but it is here, but I do not think we need a relief route at this time. Thank you.
Number six is Tamara Bolton.
Tamara Bolton, and thank you for your time, and I'll tell you, I spent some time today looking over the report that you guys put out about this last year or so. I was impressed with what you had done. I mean, I was, it took me aback, and I want to thank you for bringing Jacksonville along, pulling us through the pandemic, and doing what you did, because it had to have been tough, and I appreciate what you did. I just want to say that I would respectfully request that you oppose the relief route, because it doesn't just affect Jacksonville proper, it affects citizens that live outside the city, but, like I do, but who work here, who send their kids to school here, and who shop here. And so if you could find it in your hearts to remember that Jacksonville's more than just the city limits, it's the entire area. We love Jacksonville too. I went to school here, like a lot of you, and I love Jacksonville, and I want to preserve it, but I also want to see it grow, and I think what you guys are doing now, if you keep this up, it's going to be good for all of us.
Very good. Thank you. And we do have a number seven, which is Barry Thibodeau.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor and Council.
You bet.
I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm in opposition, I think all of you that have talked to you, I've told you that, for several reasons, and for all the reasons they mentioned, and David, I did Chick-fil-A, so I confess. Anyway, my concern is that Councilman Goan put on Facebook today that we have a thousand jobs that have been added. Why would we risk those thousand jobs, those people that need those jobs by having a bypass that would decrease the business? And the study from UT in the early 2000s showed that there was negative effects in the cities that had small, small cities to medium cities, and we fit in the medium category, going around the city. And that, I want to say, also, there's a human impact, not only the business and all the stuff, the people that are going to be taken out, how impersonal it is, and I understand TechStop has their business they have to address, but I'm going to tell you, when they say that there's 25, 26, 27, 30 structures that are going to be taken down, if they take the blue route, that structure, one of those happens to be my home, it's not a structure, it's my retirement home. I've served 21 years in the military and moved 20 times in 21 years, I'm tired of moving. And that runs right through our neighborhood, and it impacts a whole bunch of our homes, the noise, we have people that are going to have a four-lane highway within 100 feet of their back porch. I mean, there's some ridiculous things that happen with this, so I just want to say there's a lot of personal effects. And the other thing that bothers me is having been in health care for 49 years, and the last over 20 years here in our community doing anesthesia, studies don't tell us the full impact on human physiology, and this road is going to be passing by a lake, it's going to be passing over some of our water sources. And science is a study, and it's best guessed in some cases, and I've seen it in medicine, where we do studies, we think we got the answer, but we don't. And just because we have ecological and environmental studies doesn't mean we won't have ultimately effect by ground seepage and so forth into our water supply. So I strongly, strongly oppose and ask you to please oppose this, oppose the building of this loop. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. That concludes our citizens' participation, and I think since it's fresh on our mind, this is item 12 on our agenda, but if it's okay with everybody, I'm just going to go ahead and move it up to item, and we'll just take it first, and then we'll get back on track. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution of support or opposition to the proposed relief route. Greg, you got any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, Council, as the mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this was brought back up at the request of some interested parties, and so the staff has prepared both a resolution for either way, support or opposition, and so at this time, that is all I have unless there's any specific questions.
Okay.
Ray.
Yes, sir.
One person, two people have reached out to us to ask our opinion on this. In the meantime, we've learned that TechStop came out in April, published a YouTube video, this project's not moving forward.
At this time?
At this time. 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, they can do what they want to do. You know, do we pass the buck today? I don't. I mean, if it's a dead issue, why are we up here hashing this out? I mean, why do we have to vote up? Why do we have to vote down? It's not an issue that is moving forward anywhere from the state of Texas standpoint. Can't we just get rid of it?
Okay. Anybody else?
Is that considered taking it, or are we passing the buck by doing it? I mean, y'all, I'm the youngest one here, tell me what, tell me what y'all's thoughts are.
Sure. I mean, that's an option. If we wanted to kick the can down the road, we certainly could.
When all this was brought back up to us, I mean, none of us knew that TechStop had come in and sent videos or, I mean, published this stuff on their own side, saying that they weren't moving forward to this project, and it kind of makes our whole conversation here tonight, you know, why did we spend this time doing this when it's a dead project to start with?
I still think in the city, though, we need to, we need to state that we oppose it, because it's clearly, if the public speakers have said they oppose it, and I think we need to be the voice of the people, so that's my thoughts.
What does that do for us? What does that do moving forward 15, 20 years for the next council? And, you know, maybe I'm a bit naive right here, but I always think that we have a stronger voice at the table than we do by pulling back from the table, and if we publicly, you know, however we want to state it, say, we're against this, what have we done to a city council that's here past us, that's here 15 years from now, 20 years from now? What are we doing to those people to tie their hands that may prevent them in a different timeframe, in a different period, under different circumstances? What are we going to do with the relationship from the state of Texas and TechStop to that group of people? What are we going to do to their bargaining power? How are we going to affect their leverage? How are we going to, I mean, by us, by us taking a stance on something that's a zero issue today, I mean, this is not, it's not moving forward, but if we come in today and take that stance, are we tying the hands of, you know, our future leaders 20 years from now, 15 years from now, in a negative way from a bargaining standpoint?
I may be able to answer that, just the history I have with TechStop.
Yeah, sure.
So typically, when TechStop does projects like this, they will always open them up for public comment. So if this project is not a valid project today, or becomes not a valid project in the near future, when the next option comes up, TechStop will start the entire process over, engage all the governmental agencies, and engage all the communities with each and every one of these plans. That has been TechStop's history, that has been TechStop's plan, and I don't know of TechStop ever circumventing the local governments on a project of this magnitude, or any changes in a community of significant magnitude without engaging the governmental body at that time.
And I think they did that, what, X amount of years ago, that came up.
Yes, my understanding is this is the second time that the relief route has been brought up, and both times they engaged the government officials of everybody involved as well as the public.
And I think 10, 15 years down the road, if the traffic continues to get bad, I can't promise you, but I would bet they'd come back again and leave that, leave that up to that group of people. We'll be all gone by then, so.
I mean, I'm just, I'm going to vote on something that, I mean, it does, it affects nobody today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may, I would make a motion that we oppose the relief route around Jacksonville.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae and a second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. I assume it's to approve the resolution in opposition?
Yes, sir.
To the proposed relief route around the town, okay? So we have a motion and a second to resolve that we oppose it publicly. Any other discussion that we might need to have? All right, we'll call a vote. All in favor of opposing the relief route, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Okay? Very good. So we'll go back to, and if you are here for that, feel free to, if you're done, we won't think negative towards you if you want to leave at this point, that's okay. We've been there before and we've worn that T-shirt. Yeah. Our next item is the second reading of a resolution in support of economic development incentives, and I think Mr. James Hubbard, president of JEDCO, will take care of that item for us.
All right, I thought they were here for me, but good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. James Hubbard of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation or JEDCO. As you're aware, last week, we had the phenomenal announcement by Brookshire Grocery Company that they are going to be building a Super One Foods grocery store in Jacksonville. JEDCO has been working directly with Brookshires for more than three years to expedite this announcement. Brookshires has proven themselves as a fantastic community partner, and the arrival of a Super One Foods will meet the desire of our residents while at the same time strengthening the tax base and creating a significant amount of jobs. JEDCO is seeking approval of Resolution 06202101 in support of economic development assistance to Brookshire Grocery Company of $50,000. This assistance is for their investment in real estate and infrastructure to support the store. JEDCO is also assisting Brookshires acquire rights to additional property surrounding their site to increase the store's visibility and curb appeal. This project was noticed in the Jacksonville Progress on May 15 of this year. A public hearing was held on June 1, 2021, and no public comments were received at the JEDCO meeting, and it received unanimous support by the JEDCO Board at their June 1, 2021 meeting. I'm happy to address any questions prior to the second reading and consideration of this resolution.
We're good. Go ahead. No questions.
All right, so this marks the second reading of Resolution 06202101. The first reading took place at the city council agenda workshop on Thursday, June the 3rd. Resolution number 06202101, a resolution of the city council of the city of Jacksonville, Texas approving projects of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation that may include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure, and improvements found by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors to promote new or expanded business development within the city of Jacksonville, providing perseverance and establishing an effective date.
Very good. Thank you, James. Item number seven is to discuss and consider with possible action or resolution in support of that economic development incentive that he just read about, so. Anybody have any?
I mean, that's a big piece of property for a grocery store. Are there other subplots going in, other potential businesses going in there with it?
That's a great question.
What do we know?
Yeah, so we facilitated some dialogue with some developers out of the Dallas area that were interested in building a big box store in conjunction, in conjunction with the Super One site, because as you mentioned, Mayor Protem, it is a rather large site. However, at this time, our understanding is that it will move forward as just the development site for the Super One Foods store.
And then they have access property, it appears, just me driving by there, that there'll be access to that property from South Fulton Street, that there'll be access to that property from Canada Street, and there'll be access to that property from South Jackson.
Yeah, I have not seen a final site plan, but I do believe they'll have those three points of ingress and egress. And they're looking to get a little bit of additional frontage along 69 there to clean up the, kind of clean up the corridor for us.
But I would, yeah, I mean, my interest more so was traffic patterns.
Right, right.
You know, using the Canada Street, using the Bolton Street, as there should be points into all that.
Sure, and they'll have a cross connection into the Supergio and then the Walmart Shopping Center as well, so, yeah.
That will help a lot.
Certainly.
Anybody have any more questions for me? Okay. Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Rob Goen to support the resolution. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight is our consent agenda. These are just, they require little or no deliberations by the council, and you can see those there, the minutes, some reappointments to the Access Board, appointment to the Lake Advisory Board, three appointments to the JEDCO Board, some signatures that's needed at Prosperity Bank, and approve a parade route for the Juneteenth celebrations. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that consent agenda.
I motion we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McCray. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number nine is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the auditor RFP. Mr. Gray.
Yes, Council. We have received two audit proposals, one from Patilla Brown and Hill, the other one from Brooks Watson and Company. The finance committee, which consists of Mayor Goram and Councilmember McCray, as well as the finance director and myself, did the scoring criteria for this. And Patilla Brown has an average score of 81.25. Brooks Watson has an average score of 77.5. So staff's recommendation and the recommendation of the committee is to sign the agreement with Patilla Brown. It is a one-year agreement with three additional terms, so it is a four-year agreement.
Okay. We've heard that. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Patilla Brown and Hill as our approved auditor.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McCray. Second by Mayor Protem Rob Goen. Any discussion we need to have? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 10 is to-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, on this next item, since I am a participant in that process, I would like to not only abstain from the vote, but I'd also like to excuse myself.
That'd be great.
If that's okay, so y'all can have an open discussion about how bad or good I am.
That's good. Just don't eat all of our snacks. Item number 10 is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the fleet vehicle RFP. Mr. Gray.
Yes, Council. This year, we were doing this a little bit earlier than we have in the years past, and that is based off of the current environment that we have in our automobile industry. The delay in getting these vehicles has become longer and longer. So staff did look at what it would take to keep our same December delivery date as an average, and so that is what has pushed the RFP to be sent out in June, not September as we've done in the years past. I'm excited to report that this year, with the sale of our current fleet, the city will receive revenues in excess of $200,000 profit for the sale of our current fleet. That is an $8,000 per unit price. We actually have two units that are being used as spare or backup units, and the bid did contemplate selling those now. And so those two units will bring us $10,000 profit by going ahead and releasing them now. The two departments that have those units have said they don't have a need for them, that the benefit to the city is greater by going ahead and releasing those two units now. During the RFP process, we had three or four vendors request the packet. They had to request the packet. The packet was then sent to them. We did receive one packet back, and that is from McCray Ford. And so the staff is recommending the purchase of 33 city fleet trucks. Again, this will be the same program that we use. We will drive them anywhere from 12 to 16 months. We're trying to keep it at the 12 months in the 12,000 mile range. We've been able to do that the past two years and feel comfortable that we will be able to do that again. And then we will do this again next year. Since the beginning of this program, the city has profited over half a million dollars by selling our fleet and buying a new fleet each year. That includes the original reduction of the fleet when we were able to sell all the initial vehicles. So this has been a profit for the council. We are meeting all the state requirements for bidding laws as well as the legal requirements for the time we have to keep the vehicles to receive the governmental incentives. So at this time, staff is recommending to award the bid for 33 vehicles to McCray Ford.
Okay.
Did y'all pay attention to all that, our YouTube people and Facebook people that, you know, I see on a daily routine basis that, you know, we have citizens in town that complain about our city driving brand-new vehicles and having all these four-wheel-drive trucks that in two years, we've put almost half a million dollars in our city bank account by executing this type of business deal under a government contract through Ford Motor Company.
With very little repairs.
With, I mean, we've taken our repairs and maintenance.
To zero.
We survived snowpocalypse this year with our four-wheel-drive fleet. It's not just a matter of, it's not just a matter of, you know, we're spending willy-nilly and going crazy with money and all that kind of stuff. We've made almost half a million dollars by flipping these trucks once a year. I mean, our profit this year off of them is right out, right under a quarter million dollars. So that's good use of taxpayer money right there.
Very good. Yeah, yeah, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we award the fleet vehicle RFP.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman and Mayor Protem Rob Goen.
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does count.
Mayor, if you will stop so we can get Councilmember McCray back.
Okay, there you go.
Can I make a quick comment? It's nice to see our city with new trucks driving around with the logo on. It looks good.
We had one person, I think he worked in the water treatment plant, he'd, I think he'd worked there over 40 years, that's the first brand-new vehicle he has ever driven. So it's a neat program. Very good. Item number 11 is, we're going to skip that one.
Yes, item number 11 will be tabled and will be handled at another meeting.
Okay. So we don't need to officially table it, just we're not going to-
Pulling it from the agenda, yes.
Skipping it from the agenda. Item 12, we took care of that one earlier. Now we're at the city manager's report. Item number 13.
So Council, I just have a couple. As you know, this week is Tomato Fest week, and so tonight is the dice competition where it's Kiwanis versus Rotary at Key Posol. Last night, they had the dodgeball tournament, and then Wednesday night was a night golf tournament hosted by the Rotary Club. That has been postponed due to the weather. The golf course is underwater, so that's a little bit hard. Night golf is hard. Underwater golf is really hard. So we're going to not try to play underwater golf. Then Thursday night is Farm to Table, and then Saturday is the Tomato Fest, and we want to remind everybody and welcome everybody to come downtown. It is going to be a great event. This year, the city is doing the first time, it's called City Central, where we will have a lot of our equipment and our trucks, police cars, fire trucks, ambulances for the kids and adults to look at, walk around, sit in, play with, stuff like that, as well as all the city departments will be represented, represented for their different activities that they perform. And so we are super excited about that. Also wanted to address, and I think it goes without saying, staff completely understands that there are a lot of utility cuts that have not been repaired in months. And as you recall, we went from February till now unable to get those repaired. We have a contractor that is waiting to start. They've been marked. We are ready to do them all. Between the rain and the lag of being able to get asphalt, we have not been able to get them. We are not ignoring them. We are not intentionally delaying this. This is just a weather and a materials shortage that we're having, shortage of good days and shortage of materials. As soon as we get several days without rain and the asphalt plants will fire back up, we will get to all of them. In addition to Councilmember Goen's statement, we also have a contract out for street overlays, and that contract has been awarded, and we are in the same situation. Anybody that is in construction right now knows that raw materials and materials are getting delayed, as well as this weather pattern of six and a half out of seven days a week having rain in some form or fashion is just slowing everything down. So we do, we are aware, and we do apologize, and please understand, we are trying to get to it just as quickly as the weather and materials will allow us to. The last thing I have is we want to welcome Kimberly Lynn as our interim finance director. This is her first council meeting, and she is coming at a very fun time, where we start budget meetings tomorrow morning with the police department. And so we will be ready to start those budget meetings. We'll be ready to start those budget meetings. And then our budget workshop is set for July 30th and 31st of this year. It will be held at the JEDCO offices, that's Friday afternoon and Saturday. So I think that is it, with the exception of the Flag Day ceremony will be held Monday, and we welcome everybody to come to Flag Day at the Tilton Park right next to the central fire station.
Yes, sir.
No, the library, the library will not be able to be open during the Tomato Fest.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay. So that will conclude our regularly scheduled meeting. At this time, we will go into closed executive session, City Hall Conference Room, per Open Meetings Act, per Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with attorneys about possible litigation, 551.072, discussion of real property, and we will reconvene to open session for any action if necessary. Thank you for coming. Regular session at 7:49.
Yes, Council, I have several recommendations coming out of executive session. The first one is to authorize the city manager and the city attorney to sell real property to Mr. Jason Oakley, located off of County Road 3112.
Okay.
In the amount of the appraised value.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
So Councilman Tim McCray makes that motion. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Council, I have another recommendation to where the city council authorizes the city manager to put seven lots, or to sell seven lots located in the South Shore subdivision Block D. The lots will range from .51 acres up to .77 acres, and these will be sold in a manner approved by the state of Texas.
Did you hear that motion? I mean, you hear that recommendation? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we sell the seven lots in the South Shore subdivision.
I have a motion by Council Lady Mindy Gallick. Second by Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The last recommendation I have is dealing with the sale of the seven lots in South Shore subdivision. I would recommend that the city of Jacksonville use an agent-of-record form to sell these and authorize the city attorney and city manager to enter into an agent-of-record contract in the future for the sale of these lots.
Okay, we've heard that recommendation. I'll have a motion by Mayor Protem Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McCray. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. I think that's all three that we had, so. Oh, hang on. Okay. So that concludes tonight's city council meeting, and we will adjourn at 7:51. Thank you for attending.